We'll be beginning in just a few moments. And Rahat, this is a reminder just to you for the recording.
Thank you.
Again, this is Joe Faust with the North Carolina Division of Air Quality, and this is the public hearing for Active Energy Renewable Power. We'll wait just a few more minutes if we have any more attendees to show up. I'll be beginning shortly. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:02 PM on Wednesday, June 22, 2020. This is the virtual public hearing, and it is now considered to be open. Again, my name is Joe Faust, and I am the Regional Compliance Supervisor for the North Carolina Division of Air Qualities, Mooresville Regional Office. I have been appointed to be a hearing officer for this virtual public hearing directed by the Director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Aberzinski. My purpose this evening is to receive in an orderly manner your oral comments for consideration in issuance of an air permit to Active Energy Renewable Power for construction and operation of a new wood pellet manufacturing facility at 1885 Alamack Road, Lumberton, North Carolina. The focus of this hearing, and the only focus, is to receive public comments on the proposed air permit for Active Energy Renewable Power as they relate to the applicability of air quality regulations. A public meeting was originally scheduled for March 16, 2020, for the issuance of this air permit. A public notice for the original public meeting and public comment period was published in the Robsonian on February 14, 2020, and on the Division of Air Qualities website. Due to health concerns and travel restrictions associated with COVID-19, the public meeting was canceled. The Division of Air Quality is conducting this public hearing digitally to allow public participation while protecting public health under current guidance to prevent the spread of COVID-19. This public hearing announcement was published in the Robsonian and on the Division of Air Qualities website on Saturday, May 23, 2020. The Division of Air Quality regulations do not require hearing or comment period for issuance of this air permit. However, due to excuse me, due to specific public interest or significant public interest, the Director of the Division of Air Quality has decided to open a comment period and conduct this public hearing to receive pertinent public comments on whether to allow or deny issuance of this air permit to Active Energy Renewable Power. The required 30-day public notice for this virtual public hearing was published Saturday, May 23, 2020, in the Robsonian and on the Division of Air Quality website. The comment period for this permit opened on February 14, 2020, and will close on June 26, 2020. The required duration for comment period is 30 days per hour 15A NCAC 2Q 300 rules. Due to the COVID-19 situation and other factors, the extended comment period for this permit will be a total of 133 days. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via mail, electronic mail, and by phone to a voice mailbox. The email address is daq-publiccomments@ncdenr.gov. The phone number with the voicemail box is 919-707-8714. And I'll give that address and phone number again toward the end of the meeting. During this virtual public hearing tonight, we will be receiving oral comments from those individuals who pre-registered to speak at this event. If you're having difficulties, excuse me, technical difficulties with WebEx, you can use the chat feature in WebEx to ask questions or seek assistance. You can also visit the Division of Air Qualities website using the link in the public notice for this hearing for instructions on various ways to connect to WebEx. Joining me for this hearing tonight by WebEx are, from Division of Air Qualities Raleigh Central Office, Michael Pajetra, Deputy Director for the Division of Air Quality; Zainab Nassif, Division of Air Qualities Public Information Officer; Rahat Ashik, Environmental Engineer with the Rules Development Branch; and from the Fayetteville Regional Office for the Division of Air Quality, we have Heather Carter, Regional Supervisor; and Gregory Reeves, Permit Coordinator. I want to thank everyone involved in getting this public hearing scheduled and organized with special thanks to Rahat and Zainab for their technical expertise in setting up this event. Copies of the permit application, the air permit application review, the draft air permit, and other information concerning the Active Energy Renewable Power application are available to the public at the following locations: The Division of Air Quality Fayetteville Regional Office, located at 225 Green Street, Suite 714, in Fayetteville, North Carolina; Also at the Division of Air Quality Central Office Permit Section, located at 217 West Jones Streets, in Raleigh, North Carolina. If you haven't done so and wish to review these materials in person, they are available to you during normal business hours at the locations I just mentioned. However, due to the COVID-19, an appointment is required. Please call in advance to make an appointment. A copy of the draft permit and the permit application review are also available on the Division of Air Qualities website at www.ncair.org. The order of events for this hearing are as follows. First, Mr. Gregory Reeves from the Division of Air Qualities Fayetteville Regional Office, who reviewed the permit application and wrote the draft permit, will discuss the air permitting procedures and the application DAQ received from Active Energy Renewable Power for the air permit. This will be followed by comment period, oh, excuse me, public comment period. We will receive oral comments from those individuals who pre-registered to speak at this event. This will allow us to have an accurate hearing record. Only those who pre-registered will be called on to speak. To provide enough time for public comment, this meeting will be conducted in the following manner. All efforts will be made to call on speakers in the same order of your registration. Oral comments will be limited to a maximum of two and a half minutes. I will call the names of each of the pre-registered speakers in order, and our web host will unmute the speaker when it is your turn to speak. I will also announce the name of the next speaker in queue so they can be prepared to provide their comments when their name is called. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. Your time will begin when the WebEx host has unmuted your microphone. Rahat Ashik will keep track of your time and will announce when your two and a half minutes have expired. For those of you viewing by computer, the time is also shown on the screen. Please respect the time of all who wish to present their oral comments tonight by adhering to the time limits and closing your remarks as quickly as possible once time is up. Cross-examination of the person presenting comments will not be allowed. However, as hearing officer, I may ask questions of the presenter for clarification. Questions directed to the Division of Air Quality staff will not be answered during this hearing. If you have questions for DAQ staff, we can provide you with their contact information so you may contact them after the meeting during normal office hours. After receiving comments this evening, the hearing record will be closed. However, the period for submitting comments does not close until June 26, 2020, at 5:00 PM. You have until June 26 at 5:00 PM to submit additional written comments. Again, the only focus of this hearing is the presentation of oral comments related to air quality issues associated with issuing an air permit to Active Energy Renewable Power and the applicability of air quality regulations. Only relevant air quality comments can be considered in my final recommendation to our division director. I will now call on Gregory Reeves of the Division of Air Quality Fayetteville Regional Office to discuss the air permitting procedures and permit application review. Greg?
Thanks, Joe. Good evening. My name is Greg Reeves. I'm the Permits Coordinator for the Division of Air Quality in the Fayetteville Regional Office. I'll be discussing the permit application and the permitting process for the air permit application for Active Energy Renewable Power in Lumberton. Note that we have a PowerPoint slide presentation with this information on the DAQ website that was posted on March 16. The permitting process consists of several steps. When an applicant submits an air permit application to DAQ, first, we perform a review of the permit application to assure completeness. Next, we verify emission factors and process rates submitted in the application. After that, based on the potential emissions, we determine permit classification based on those emission factors and process rates. The permit classification can be Title V, Synthetic Minor, or Small. Next, we determine the applicable state and federal air quality rules. Then, the permit engineer writes enforceable permit requirements for the applicable rules. After all that's completed, final action is taken on the application, which may include issuance of the permit. After DAQ issues an air permit, we're not done. Our compliance program then kicks in. Each of our air permits requires some combination of inspection and maintenance, monitoring and record-keeping, reporting, or source testing in order to demonstrate compliance with the conditions of the permit. DAQ conducts unannounced inspections at the permitted facility to verify compliance with all permit requirements and physically verify the site operations. This permit application for Active Energy Renewable Power is for a proposed new wood pellet manufacturing operation to be located at the site of the former Alamack American Knits Facility, located at 1885 Alamack Road in Lumberton. The permit application was received on November 4, 2019. A review of the emission factors and process rates indicate that potential criteria pollutant emissions, which includes particulate matter less than 10 microns, or PM10, carbon monoxide, or CO, sulfur dioxide, or SO2, nitrogen oxides, or NOx, and volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, are each less than 100 tons per year. Potential individual hazardous air pollutants, or HAP emissions, are less than 10 tons per year, and potential total hazardous air pollutant emissions are less than 25 tons per year. Based on these potential air pollutant emissions, the facility will be classified as a small or a minor source. The proposed pellet production process consists of the following equipment. First, a 20 million BTU per hour natural gas-fired boiler will provide steam for the pressure cooker process. That pressure cooker operation, with air pollutant emissions controlled by a water-cooled condenser, follows, and a screw press, pellet press, natural gas-fired dryer process. The facility will also operate several processes that are exempt from air permitting requirements. These include an existing wastewater treatment plant, a 180 horsepower diesel-fired fire pump, a 15 horsepower diesel-fired emergency generator, a propane vaporizer, a pellet storage area, and a greenwood log chipper. The pellet-making process consists of mixing green or dry wood chips with steam in a batch process pressure cooker vessel. The steam and any volatile organic compounds produced in the pressure cooker are vented to a water-cooled condenser where the majority of the steam and VOCs are condensed to liquid. The cooked wood fibers are then sent to a screw press where further dewatering and some compaction occurs. The screw press then feeds the material to the pellet press where the pellets are formed. The pellets are then fed into a natural gas-fired dryer where surface moisture is evaporated, and then the finished pellets are sent to a pellet storage area and loaded out in bulk. Air pollutant emissions from the process consist mainly of volatile organic compounds from the pressure cooker and pellet press operations, and some carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, and some HAPs and TAPS from the natural gas combustion in the boiler and dryer. Source testing of the pressure cooker operation will be required after startup of the facility to verify the VOC emissions from the process. The processes are subject to a number of federal and North Carolina state air quality rules. All the conditions included in the permit have limitations or standards with which the facility must comply. As previously mentioned, DAQ verifies compliance with these conditions through unannounced onsite inspections, record reviews, and report reviews. The conditions in the permit place limits on particulate matter emissions from the boiler and pellet-making processes, sulfur dioxide emissions from the natural gas combustion sources, visible emissions from all of the processes at the facility, and facility-wide toxic air pollutant emissions. The permit conditions also include requirements for control of fugitive dust and odors. The facility will be required to notify DAQ when the process begins operation. The facility will also be required to monitor the condenser temperatures and maintain the outlet vapor temperature exiting the condenser to below 210 degrees Fahrenheit. Periodic inspection and maintenance and record-keeping are also required. Expected actual emissions based on the proposed five tons per hour pellet production rate are as follows: Volatile organic compounds, 23.63 tons per year; Carbon monoxide, 7.91 tons per year; Nitrogen oxides, 9.41 tons per year; and hazardous air pollutants and toxic air pollutants, 2.48 tons per year, with the highest hazardous air pollutant being acetaldehyde at 1,479 pounds per year. Eight different toxic air pollutants were identified as being emitted by the processes at the facility. Emissions of those toxic air pollutants did not exceed the toxic permitting emission rates, so no toxic air excuse me, no toxic air dispersion modeling was required. So to recap, the majority of the air pollutant emissions are volatile organic compounds. No toxic air pollutants exceed the toxic permitting emission rates. The volatile organic compound emissions will be verified by stack testing and continuous temperature monitoring, and continuing compliance with the permit conditions and emission limits will be verified through stack testing and periodic facility inspections and record reviews. I'll now turn the meeting back over to Joe Faust.
Thank you, Greg. Now, at this time, we will hear from those who pre-registered to provide oral comments this evening. When your name is called, our WebEx host will unmute your microphone so that you may provide your comments. To ensure our records are complete, please clearly state your name and who you are representing. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak clearly and loudly towards your computer's microphone or telephone speaker. Please do not start speaking until our WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. Now, this is critically important for clarity of your comments. Please turn down any speakers that you have that can create feedback. If there are significant feedback on your line, we may need to mute your call and attempt to come back to you later. If I call your name but we cannot hear you after you have been unmuted, please check to see if you are muted on the WebEx screen on your computer. If you're having audio issues, try a different method of audio connection within WebEx or use the Call Me feature to have WebEx call your personal telephone. If we still cannot hear you, we will proceed to the next registered speaker, but I will call your name again at the end of the hearing. I will do my best to pronounce the names correctly and apologize in advance for any errors. As I call on speakers, I will also announce the next speaker so they can prepare to speak next. We will now begin taking oral comments. The first person I have pre-registered to speak is Stuart Hanford. Rahat, if you would, unmute Mr. Hanford's mic.
Stuart, you've been unmuted, and you can go ahead and make your comment.
Mr. Hanford, are you there? We cannot hear you. Mr. Hanford, we still cannot hear you. Is your microphone muted on WebEx on your side of the screen? Okay, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Hanford. We cannot hear you. We will move on to the next speaker, and I will attempt to come back to you at the end of the list. And I apologize. I should have called two names for next to speak. Our next speaker, Erin Carey. And following Erin will be Kay Raybold. Erin? If you have your comments, please.
Hey, Erin, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statement now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Carey. I'm the Coastal Programs Manager for the North Carolina Sierra Club. I hope everyone listening tonight is safe and healthy, and your loved ones are as well. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Sierra Club and our more than 100,000 members and supporters who stand in solidarity with the people of Robinson County and ask that DAQ deny the air permit request from Active Renewables Group for the sake of justice and the climate. No good can come of this wood pellet facility being allowed to operate in Robinson County. The population of this community is 38% American Indian, 25% African American, and 5% Latino Hispanic. At a time in this country when the treatment of brown and black people by our institutions has been exposed in sharp relief, it is unwise and unjust to proceed with this permit process without a full environmental justice report. We're in the midst of a respiratory viral pandemic that disproportionately impacts communities of color. The introduction of new air pollutants into this community at any time, but particularly at this time, is unacceptable. Nothing less than the health and welfare of the people is at stake. Governor Cooper has spoken of his commitment to justice, and he has also demonstrated a commitment to climate action. Through EO80, he has created a roadmap for the future so our state can cut carbon emissions and transition to clean energy. Yesterday, the temperature in Siberia hit 100 degrees Fahrenheit, the hottest on record and an alarming development. We're in a climate emergency now. We need our trees to keep the land cool and sequester carbon and play host to incredible biodiversity. The purpose of this wood pellet facility is to clear North Carolina forests and turn our trees into small pellets to be shipped overseas and burned for power. This is not climate action. This is a mistake. On behalf of our members, I request that DAQ move to protect our people and our planet by denying this permit request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kay Raybold. And then, following Kay is Heather Hilliker. We will get your timer reset here, and then we will get Kay unmuted here shortly.
Hey, Joe.
Yes, sir.
I do not see Kay as attended yet, so we will move to Heather.
Got you. Thank you very much. We will skip Kay and come back to see if she attends later. The next speaker is Heather Hilliker. And then, following Heather is Rachel Radveney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Hilliker, and I am an attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center. I'm here tonight to urge DAQ to either deny the draft permit or at the very least add several key testing requirements, require air toxics modeling, and incorporate production and operating limits to ensure that Active Energy does not evade key clean air requirements and to ensure that the people of Lumberton and the surrounding areas are protected from harmful pollution. It is readily apparent from the application documents that neither the company nor DEQ have any idea what the actual emissions of this facility will be. In some instances, DEQ appears to have accepted the company's unsupported assertions regarding particular emissions. This is specifically relevant for acrylene and formaldehyde, two state toxic air pollutants that are not accurately accounted for in the draft permit. As discussed in more detail in our written comments, emissions of these two pollutants will almost certainly exceed state toxic air pollutant limits requiring modeling. DAQ must deny this permit and conduct the legally mandated modeling in order to ensure that these emissions will not exceed levels set by the state. The draft permit also fails to consider or otherwise underestimates a number of other harmful pollutants that will be emitted from the facility, including CO, VOCs, and particulate matter. At very least, DAQ must require a more comprehensive stack testing at the facility for all criteria pollutants and hazardous air pollutants so that the state and the public will know what's actually coming out of this facility.
What, here, read this. This is what I
Comprehensive stack testing is even more important due to the company's unambiguous intent to increase the facility's production tenfold in the near future. Testing will provide actual data by which DAQ can evaluate any future expansions of this facility. Moreover, DAQ has issued this draft permit without considering the cumulative impacts at the proposed North Carolina people of Lumberton and Robinson County, which are among some of the most racially diverse areas in the state. The explosion that will be emitted from this facility at both the current and intended future production levels will only add to the environmental injustice that has already plagued the surrounding community. I therefore urge DAQ to deny this draft permit, at least until the agency conducts the legally required modeling for state caps and conducts a full environmental justice analysis in accordance with its duties under Title VI. If DAQ moves forward with this draft permit and must at least require comprehensive stack testing and address the other issues raised in our written comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Radveney. And following Rachel will be Antonio Esposito. Rachel?
Hey, Joe. Antonio is next.
Okay.
So
My apologies.
Antonio, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Oh, hi, my name is Antonio Esposito, and I work for Active Energy. I'll be very short. I just want to not clarify, but specify a little better what our process is because I don't think that there's a little bit misunderstanding on what our, what are the processes. I do know that we're associated with the white panels, but the steam explosion is, first of all, it's in itself a widely experimented method, you know, which was patented by Masonite, actually, in 1930. So, and it's widely used even for other industries, including the production of the artboard, you know, the doors that many of us have used, you know. The steam explosion is basically a method of use pressure steam and rapid decompression to explode the fiber. And this actually doesn't involve the use of any chemical. It's one of the most eco-friendly processes that anybody can use for pretreatment of the biomass. All the details of our products are on our website, so I invite everybody to look into that to understand the benefit of it. But in particular, you know, I want to highlight one fact is that the steam explosion allows to create pellets from the steam explosion allows to create pellets from residual wood, from waste wood, from bark, from material that otherwise are not, are not used for, uh, the, for the pellets themselves. So it is really not a process that is intended, you know, um, that, that utilize, uh, let's say, let's call it as it's the pulpwood, as someone wants to, wants to think. But actually, it's a process that is targeted to efficiently use the wood, the wood residues. So, um, I, I, we actually think that the impact on the, the community, the forest, and whatever.
Sir, you could, uh, go ahead and wrap up your.
Yeah, Mr. Espacito, your time has expired.
Okay.
Uh, you're certainly welcome to submit additional comments to us, uh, and I'll provide the phone number and email address, uh, if you have additional comments you would like to submit.
Sure.
Thank you. Next, we have Roger Richardson, and then after that, we have Nikki Jones.
Roger, I believe you're, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your own statements now.
Hello, my name is Roger Richardson. I'm with Renewable Logistics Systems. We're a logistics provider for Active Energy Renewable Power, and we are in favor of them receiving their permit to proceed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Nikki Jones. Then following Nikki Jones, we have Dorian Wainwright.
Hey Joe, I do not see Nikki, so I'll be moving on to Dorian.
Okay, thank you very much. Miss, uh, Dorian Wainwright will be next, followed by Grant Mercer.
I also don't see Dorian or Grant.
Okay.
So let me see. Uh, we could move on to, um.
Do we have Ju, uh, okay, Juhi Modi, uh, will be next, and then following, uh, Juhi, we have, um, Anita Cunningham.
Uh, Juhi, your mic has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Hello, uh, my name is Juhi Modi. I am with the Robinson County Cooperative for Sustainable Development, speaking against this permit request. Um, so cumulative impact is essential to consider regarding the evaluation of this permit. According to the DEQ's own community mapping tool, there are already at least a dozen pollution sources in Robinson County, and it is otherwise clear that there is much dirty energy industry in this area. Some examples include a biomass facility that has been fined multiple times for not following its permit, and two large chicken processing centers with massive spray fields. The list goes on, which is why you must not approve this permit. It is not only about the emissions that this one project would create, but how this project would exacerbate the existing harmful environmental conditions of the community. Under the National Environmental Policy Act, you must consider the evident cumulative impact from this wood pellet project. Cumulative impact is defined as the effect on the environment which results from the incremental impact of the proposed action when added to other past, present, and future actions. Robinson County is ranked the lowest in the state for health outcomes, which is no coincidence given the harsh impacts of existing pollution and dirty industry. As such, it's imperative that you consider the cumulative environmental consequences that this wood pellet project would perpetuate. I urge you to consider the people of Robinson County and the pricelessness of their health and over the supposed benefits of this project. Another reason why this project is unethical and harmful is because the people that it unjustly targets. Communities of color have and continue to be disproportionately burdened by the effects of environmentally destructive practices. A report from the EPA in 2018 found that people of color are much more likely to live near polluters and breathe polluted air. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act prohibits states from discriminating on the basis of race or color for programs that affect human health or the environment. Approving this experimental factory in Robinson County where two-thirds of the community are people of color is a display of such discrimination and cannot be permitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Anita Cunningham, followed by Kwang Hwang.
Anita, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Anita Cunningham, and I'm with the Robinson County Coalition for Clean and Green Industry. I'm also a resident of Robinson County, and I don't live very far from the plant that is proposing to do the wood pellet, um, to do that. Um, I feel like, um, North Carolina, particularly Robinson County, is already burdened with environmental, um, disasters and problems, um, with the hurricanes and, and, um, that I feel like that the wood pellet, because I understand that there are, um, experimental factors in play would harm not only the air quality, but the water quality. And because I, uh, if there are trees that are being cut down because of it to be used for the wood pellets themselves, um, you know, that helps the wood, the trees help with, um, the absorption of water during the hurricanes that we have. And I was here at the last hurricane and, um, almost completely underwater. Um, and I think that, uh, I would ask that the, that your organization not grant this permit, um, in favor of the community and, and the residents of North Carolina, and myself being one of them, um, because, um, because you guys are committed, I know to protecting the health and welfare as well as the economic well-being of North Carolina and its residents, I implore you to deny this permit so that if additional, um, you can have some additional information regarding some of the claims that the company is making, um, if they are experimental, that, that more work be done. Um, and there's a lot of already dirty industry here in Robinson County. And I would, um, it would bother me, um, to think that more dirty industry is coming to this county in North Carolina. I love North Carolina and my county, and I love being a, a member of this community, and I ask and implore that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Kwai Hwang, followed by the Reverend Mac Leggerton.
Kwai, uh, you've been muted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, first, my name is Kwah Huang. I am from, I'm a member from the Sierra Club Capital Group in Raleigh. I'm here in solidarity with the communities of Robinson County to call for a denial of permit on the wood pellet facility in Robinson for its impact on climate, forest, wildlife, and environmental justice. The AERP facility will produce 40,000 tons of wood pellet per year, which means logging of 9,600 acres of wood per year and emission of over 730,000 tons of CO2 annually. This is the same as over 155,000 extra cars on the road. And already, North Carolina is losing 200,000 acres of forest to logging and production of wood pellets that would release carbon into the atmosphere. At a time when we are supposed to push for carbon neutral by 2050 in the state, this will undoubtedly push North Carolina even further behind on its goal. You can find this information on website at Darkwood Alliance as well. The DEQ should take into consideration of how AERP's facility would make the local community even more vulnerable to climate change. The EJ Snapshot, or Environmental Justice Snapshot, revealed that within two miles above for other proposed facility, the neighboring communities would officially be considered as underserved community under DEQ's public participation plan. On top of poor health outcome, Robinson is one of the counties known to be most frequently flooded. The DEQ had a minimum to provide underserved community with enhanced engagement methods prescribed by the plan. And at this point, DEQ will be failing to meet Title VI obligation of fair treatment and meaningful involvement. For reasons above and statements made by others who are also against this wood pellet facility during this hearing tonight, I request the DEQ to deny the permit for AERP's wood pellet facility in Robinson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Reverend Mac Leggerton, followed by Kyle Cox.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, just one moment. Okay, uh, if you're ready, go ahead, please.
Yes, um, I'm Reverend Mac Leggerton, co-director of the Robinson County Cooperative for Sustainable Development. I'm opposed to an air quality permit for the AERP project for many reasons. A few of them are these. The process of making blackwood pellets has not been commercially tested in the United States. This fact alone, combined with other reasons, is enough to deny the permit. We in southeastern North Carolina live under the cloud and toxic release of Gen X, an experimental toxic chemical that had no regulatory history. We don't need any facility whose process has not been commercially and significantly tested and releases such chemicals as acrylene, ammonia, benzene, and formaldehyde into the air that we breathe. Two, AERP is not a financially stable business. It has announced that it is presently making wood pellets here in Lumberton for product testing. It is doing this without an approved permit. In my opinion, AERP is trying desperately to permit this facility to save its business at our people's expense. Three, under NEPA and Title VI of the Environmental Protection Agency, our state is opposed to take cumulative impact and environmental justice into account. We already have major amounts of dirty industry in our county, and our health status is the lowest in our state and perhaps the nation. This is also the most racially diverse rural county in the nation and one of our poorest. Four, we were able to keep Robinson County fairly clean until this new alliance between the fossil fuel and biofuel industries rapidly expanded its foothold in eastern North Carolina. Neither our local officials nor state regulators are protecting our natural and human resources from these dirty industries that falsely claim to be clean, renewable, bridge fuels, or carbon reducers. Making and burning wood pellets from live trees is worse than burning coal. They produce few jobs and put our people's health and safety and that of our air, water, land, and agricultural crops in great danger and risk of contamination, disease, and death. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kyle Cox. And following Kyle Cox, we have Mark Cox.
Hey Joe, uh, both Kyle and Mark, seems like they're un-present, so we're gonna go ahead and move to.
Got you.
I'm gonna, Carol, I'm gonna, I've unmuted you. You can make, go ahead and make your statements now. Carol?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Carol T. Richardson, and I'm a concerned resident of Robinson County, a member of the Robinson County Coalition for Clean and Green Industry and a member of the NDLACP. I'm totally against the wood pellet plant coming because of the harmful air pollutants. Majority of the residents that live in the radius of this potential plant are minorities and which many of us have underlying, underlying health issues. We are already in a battle trying to survive with this COVID-19. And to add this wood pellet plant will increase the threat to our health and well-being. Can you give us residents 100% guarantee that no harm will come to us now or later down the road by this plant being here? If you cannot say yes, then I'm totally against it coming here. I stand with the lawyers committee on the law and their request to DAQ to deny the permit request because we are struggling to survive after two major hurricanes, and there are already 133 polluting permit operations in the area. No, no, no to the wood pellet plant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jefferson Curry, followed by Keely Wood.
Jefferson, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
All right, thanks. Uh, this, I, um, my name is Jefferson Curry and I'm a lumber river keeper. Uh, my statements are follows. For more than a year, I've followed the actions of AEG, AERP across the world and in Robinson County, and from what I've learned, everywhere they do business, communities are never given straight information about this company. Although AERP spent years making pellets in Utah for testing, they claimed to have no air emissions data, which is why the plant must use NVA data at startup. If permitted, will DAQ please require increased testing so that this plant does not release uncontrolled pollution into the air before regulators have a handle on the level of harmful emissions created through their new process? AERP stated in their June 1st 2020 company review by Allenby Capital that they are currently making blackwood pellets at the Allenby site without a permit. This manufacturing process creates discharge of both air and water pollutants, but the plant does not have a valid wastewater treatment plant, uh, permit, which is disturbing since they claim that they will start production quickly if they receive a valid air quality permit. We ask that NCQ require a permit for this wastewater treatment plant before any production begins. NCQ DAQ should adequately consider the cumulative impacts, including likely future flooding in the area and at the site, and the economic justice impacts that AERP facility will have on the surrounding community. The predominantly African-American community of South Lumberton has dealt with the pollution from heavy industry long enough. And now AERP wants to experiment with wood pellets while polluting our communities. It's time that DEQ, Department of Air Quality, say no and protect our communities from the polluters that care nothing for Robinson County. For these reasons, I ask that Department of Air Quality and Department of Environmental Quality say no and deny the permit for Active Energy Renewables. AERP, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Keely Wood, followed by Megan Richardson.
Just give me a second, I'm trying to.
Sure.
Keely does not seem to be on the list, uh, that joined.
Okay.
Megan, uh, Dan, um, I'm trying to find the next person.
Sure. So Keely Wood could not find Megan Richardson, could not. Dan Richardson could not find. Then we have Darlene Richardson. Everyone, please bear with us a few moments while we get the list squared away here to find out who's next on the list and who is here to provide comments.
We have, um, up to Coretta Alfred. Uh, there's, uh, they're not present at this time.
Okay, so Matt Rice does not appear to be present. Yolanda Williams does not appear to be present. Erica Price not present. DeMarco Williams not present. Heather Fekuri not present. And so now we are at Coretta Alfred.
Joe, can I interrupt for just a second?
Absolutely.
This is Michael Pajetra.
This is Michael Pajetra, the Deputy Director with the Division of Air Quality. What we're going to do is continue to go through the list that we compiled. And for the individuals who appear not to be present, if they are on the phone line, once we go through the list, we will circle back to all the other attendees. And as we call those names, we'll ask them to hit star three that will then allow them to participate. Right now, we're just having an issue with identifying the phone numbers or identifying those people who have called in that do not have phone numbers listed. So please bear with us. We're gonna go through the list, identify everybody we can, and then we'll circle back and take comments from anybody else. And we'll continue to give instructions as we go through this process. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Michael.
Hey, Joe, the next available person on the list would be Christine Ellis.
Okay, Christine Ellis, and then that will be followed by Stephen Morrison. So Christine, if you are ready, we'll unmute your microphone here shortly.
Okay, go ahead, Christine.
Yes, this is Christine Ellis with Winyar Rivers Alliance and Lumber River Keeper Program. We ask you to deny the permit for the following three reasons. Number one, insufficient detail on air emissions. It seems unwise to rely on estimated numbers that are based on a different facility, using a different process, and, without empirical evidence, rely on the company's assertions such as that emission factors are overstated, that actual emissions will be lower, and that 80% of VOCs will be captured. Estimated air emissions are based on using wood as feedstock. However, the potential use of poultry litter has been referenced, and if so, proper consideration of this feedstock is warranted. Permitting a facility using estimated numbers for air emissions and allowing source testing within one-half year after the facility starts up poses an unacceptable risk to this vulnerable community. Reason number two, inadequate consideration of environmental injustices. Even incremental increases in air emissions threaten the health status of this community. As we've heard, Robinson County ranked last in health factors and health outcomes. Respiratory diseases are identified as the fourth-leading cause of death, and the South Lumberton community has suffered from repetitive flooding and resultant mold contamination, further impacting respiratory health in this community. I ask that no additional undue burden on this vulnerable community be borne and that a full environmental justice analysis be completed. Reason number three, bad faith on the part of AERP. Production of its wood pellet process has started. The pellet process creates liquid contaminants, but the wastewater treatment permit has expired. Oops, sorry. The AERP disclosed that it intends to increase production tenfold, yet there's no consideration of the inequality or...
Ms. Ellis, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time has expired. If you would wrap up here in a few seconds?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Stephen Morrison, followed by Joel Porter.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Dr. Stephen M. Morrison, and I'm a professor emeritus and a disaster researcher. Thank you for an opportunity to speak. As I explained in the further detail in a report that Mac Leggerton and I plan to submit to DAQ this week, I've reviewed various documents relating to the financial conditions of Activity Energy Group, the parent company, Active Energy Renewable Power. Based on my review of these documents, including Simply Wall Street, seasoned investors demonstrated clear lack of economic confidence in AEG's portfolio. I strongly encourage DAQ to review Simply Wall Street's assessment of AEG and the basis for that assessment. Based on their activities and their economic portfolio, it is abundantly clear that AEG does not have the surplus capital to assure that they meet North Carolina's air quality standards. This is particularly concerning due to the fact that no one knows exactly how much air pollution this facility will emit as proposed. And EEG repeatedly stated its intent to drastically expand. We expect sawdust problems with the proposed facility. The surrounding community already suffers from some of the highest and ever-increasing rates of respiratory illness, and I have a citation to support that. DAQ must ensure that the proposed facility is not disproportionately impacting low-income and minority communities. For these reasons, I urge DAQ to deny the draft permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Joel Porter, followed by Pauline Campbell.
Joel, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak.
Thank you. My name is Joel Porter. I'm the Policy Manager for Clean Air Carolina. Clean Air Carolina is opposed to draft small air permit number 10636R00, requested by Active Energy Group, Active Energy Renewable Power. Emissions of volatile organic compounds and nitrogen oxides from AERP's facility will combine to form increased levels of ground-level ozone. Ground-level ozone is a toxic air pollutant that causes and worsens serious health problems, including asthma, heart disease, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. It is only recently that all of North Carolina counties met the national standard for ozone, and these increased emissions threaten our ability to maintain that compliance. Additionally, VOCs are a main precursor that condense and mix into secondary fine particulate matter. PM 2.5 increases risk of mortality to patients suffering from cardiovascular and pulmonary diseases. Three of the top five leading causes of death in North Carolina are heart disease, stroke, and chronic lower respiratory diseases. Patients with these diseases are also at an increased risk of mortality should they contract COVID-19. In Robinson County, there have been over 1,000 confirmed cases of coronavirus and 14 lives lost. Positive patients in Robinson County continue to increase by the day. AERP has publicly stated that they plan on increasing production as high as tenfold. This would put certain emissions, including nitrogen oxides, in the range of 100 tons per year and require a much larger Title V permit. The feedstock, largely resources of timber, that AERP plans on harvesting, utilizing its production of pellets, are important carbon sinks mitigating the effects of climate change. Not only will the state lose this important resource, the company will be directly and indirectly emitting significant amounts of greenhouse gases. This is a direct contrast to Governor Cooper's goal of addressing climate change and transitioning North Carolina to a clean energy economy. DAQ should deny this permit and protect the health of North Carolinians. If not, then at the very least, DAQ has an obligation to investigate the level that AERP actually intends to emit and require that the company apply for the appropriate permit and install controls to limit emissions. Thank you for this opportunity to speak and holding today's hearing.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Pauline Campbell, followed by Mara Frank.
Pauline, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statement.
Good afternoon. My name is Pauline Campbell. I am a Robinson County Commissioner representing District 2. I rise to express concerns to draft air permit number 10636R00, requested by Active Energy Renewable Power. Robinson County has consistently shown up at the bottom of the national ranking. And when I support economic growth of our county, I want to make sure that businesses that locate here are not further preventing us from up in those national reports. 75% of our county is non-white. Within the two-mile buffer around the facility, the Black African-American community makes up 56% of the local population. That is more than double the state average. We have been subjected to environmental injustices for longer than I care to mention. And I believe it is time to work on improving our quality of life in Robinson County, not further endangering it. I am concerned that AERP has made a number of public statements about their intent to operate at a much higher volume than they indicated in their premier application. If this is so, corresponding pollution levels and particulates would be significantly higher than they are, as DAQ anticipates. Increased production volumes would also mean increased timber removal. Clearing our forests without a plan for proper forestation using a variety of timber that sequesters carbon and protects the long-term health of our forests is unacceptable. AERP's business model is dependent on foreign subsidies should they be allowed to operate. And these subsidies are removed, AERP could leave Robinson County with a stranded asset that is environmentally dangerous and costly to clean up. In short, I have concerns. I hope that in the event DAQ approves this permit, that AERP that will come, they will come before the board and address these concerns. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this permit and allow our voices to be heard. However, I believe this community deserves an opportunity to voice their concerns in person, and I'm disappointed that DAQ did not wait until this pandemic was over to give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mara Frank, followed by Nancy Buckingham.
Mara, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now. I don't think her mic's working. We'll want to...
Mara, can you check to see if you are muted on your end on WebEx?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can...
Oh, I'm sorry. I've had some connection problems. And anyway, I've had to connect a few times to audio for this meeting, so I apologize.
Oh, that's quite all right. Please go ahead and give your comments.
Okay, thank you. I have actually tried to listen carefully to all the comments. I think I may have missed a few. But one item that I'd like to point out is I have heard, of all the comments I've heard, they have been opposed to this permit, except for one comment by a Mr. Richardson, who's a logistics provider to the permit applicant. And he did not provide any positive reasons to issue the permit. So I would just like to point that out. I have heard, perhaps I missed something at the beginning because I had audio connection problems at the beginning, but I would like to point out that I've heard very strong, good arguments against the permit, and I haven't heard any arguments for the permit. I've only heard one comment from a Mr. Richardson. But I would like to make note that I believe that North Carolina must be committed to improving air quality for all residents of the state. And as a home on the Neuse River in Pamlico County, I'm concerned about adverse impacts on air quality throughout eastern North Carolina in particular, and also negative effects on migratory birds in North Carolina with the air pollution that would come from this facility. So I'd like to request that DAQ deny the permit for this wood pellet facility, particularly because of the unknown volumes and kinds of emissions with, you know, when we talk about ammonia, formaldehyde, benzene, that has negative impacts on more than just humans, but on animals and migratory birds. And making wood pellets is dirtier than burning coal. This permit should definitely be denied. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Nancy Buckingham, followed by Thomas Rowe.
Joe, I believe the next person available on the list would be Sherri White.
Okay, thank you. We will circle back to some of these. Next, we have Sherri White Williamson, followed by Ron Gaskin.
Sherri, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Thank you. I'm Sherri White Williamson, Environmental Justice Coordinator for the North Carolina Conservation Network. I'm speaking on behalf of the Conservation Network and the 1,320 individuals who have signed a petition, which I will submit to you all on behalf of the residents of Robinson County, who will be most affected by the influence of the proposed permit. We request that you deny the permit and perform an environmental justice analysis of the area surrounding the proposed plant. Environmental justice demands that public policy be based on mutual respect and justice for all peoples, free from any form of discrimination or bias. Here, neither of the concerns of the community nor the cumulative impacts that will affect the public health and safety of the community are being considered. To approve a permit for this facility in Robinson County is discriminatory to the residents and dangerous for their health. Numerous industries have located dirty operations in Robinson County and have been exposing residents to various forms of pollution for years. Unsurprisingly, the county is ranked worst in the state for health outcomes. If this permit is granted, this community will not just experience the impacts of the pollution from this plant, it will suffer from the cumulative impacts of the pollution emanating from all of the facilities within a mile of this proposed plant. Within a mile of this proposed operation is a North Carolina renewable power facility that burns poultry litter for energy, the Duke Energy Weatherspoon Plant, a former coal ash storage facility, a proliferation of industrial poultry production sites, and now the proposed site of the AERP wood pellet facility. Take note also that the community living within a mile of this proposed plant is majority-minority, composed of approximately 56% black and about 13% Native American citizens. Environmental justice communities are twice as likely to have a wood biomass pellet production facility placed in their communities. These communities face pollution at a higher level than most other communities, and the COVID-19 pandemic should have shown all of us that placing these types of facilities in these communities make them more vulnerable to illness and disease. We are troubled by the fact that DEQ has not taken the opportunity to listen to these communities. And at this time, we would ask that DEQ take the appropriate steps to safeguard the health of the local community, conduct further review to determine whether this permit meets the requirements, and...
Sorry, Ms. Williams, your time has expired. If you can finish up in the next few seconds, please?
Okay, whether this permit meets the stringent requirements to which the Department of Environmental Quality should adhere in order to protect the public health and safety and bring no further environmental harm to the citizens of Robinson County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ron Gaskins, followed by Elizabeth Haddix.
Ron, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Thank you. My name is Ron Gaskins. I am employed by Active Energy Renewable Power. I am on-site, and I've heard some things here about wastewater permits being expired and the ones that were expired were from Alamat Knitting, not AERP. And we are still doing testing to ensure that everything is as normal as we transition. I keep hearing that a lot of folks are speaking on behalf of the people of Robinson County. And a lot of these folks are groups that have came in to address issues. And I believe we all need to work together to try to make some... And I believe we all need to work together to try to make some, make things work. But, you know, I spoke, someone spoke about the folks here in Robinson County. And, you know, we employ ninety percent of our employees are from right around the plant. And they come to work every day. And, and, you know, we are, we're striving to keep all the permits up and, and testing every day for water and going into our production should we be approved. And I strongly encourage DEQ to look at all the, all the facts and, and with AEG and AERP. A lot of the, I believe that a lot of the comments that have been made have been personal opinions by folks that don't want it here. And I'm speaking of the plant. And I would like to see it here for many reasons. Forests are crops, just like any other crop. North Carolina's done a super job in replanting forests and replenishing. We have hybrid trees that grow back extremely fast. And everyone is doing their due diligence to ensure that there's a crop left for future. And I strongly am in favor of this plant being located here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Elizabeth Haddix, and then followed by Kelly Garvey.
Elizabeth, you can go ahead and make your statements now.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Haddix. I'm with the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights Under Law. And contrary to what the gentleman who works for AERP just said, I am not expressing my opinion. I am not expressing the opinion of Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights. I've been asked to read a statement from the Robinson County NAACP because the president Reverend Tyrone Watson is unable to be part of this digital hearing because he does not have the necessary broadband access to join. The lawyer, so that's why I'm giving it. This is the reason, the lack of internet service, that the NAACP asked DAQ to delay this permit process until an in-person hearing can be held in Robinson County. And we repeat that request right now. We believe, again, I'm reading NAACP's statement, that the special circumstances surrounding this permit, including the pandemic, justify suspension of any statutory deadlines. We strongly disagree with DAQ's position that only air quality standards are relevant to its consideration of a permit application. As we said in our April twenty-seven written comments, DAQ should deny this permit because of the racially discriminatory and harmful effects it will have on the residents who live within the two-mile radius. Those residents are majority Black and disproportionately Native American, and we are all low wealth. Contrary to what you have presented to us here, and as Heather Hiller from SCLC just said, Active Energy Renewables has not included all the necessary information for DAQ or the public to even know what pollutants will be in the air where we live. If there is anywhere in North Carolina where DAQ should deny a racially discriminatory permit, it is Robinson County. The community there along Alamack Road is still struggling to recover from recent hurricane flooding from last couple of years, even as a new hurricane season approaches and we are already dealing with pollution. Your EJ snapshot does not tell the whole story, nor does it fulfill your agency's obligation under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. But even that snapshot shows there are already a hundred and thirty-three polluting permitted operations in the two-mile radius. That's cumulative effects that you have to consider under Title VI. We want economic development in Robinson County, and we want good jobs, but Active Energy Renewables offers us.
Ms. Garvey, I'm, I'm sorry, but your time has expired. If you wrap it up in the next few seconds, please.
I will. Thank you. We believe that Title VI does not allow DAQ to grant this permit because it is going to once again force a majority Black and Native American low-wealth community in Robinson County to bear the disproportionate burdens from industrial pollution. You need to tell Active Renewables to move their plants somewhere else. You need to protect us and you need to follow the law, not just environmental laws.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garvey.
Discrimination laws.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. If, in the interest of time, we need to move on to, to other speakers, you're certainly welcome to submit additional comments to us through email or call our office, please. Thank you. Next, we have Tyrone, followed by Rachel Velez.
Hey, Joe, you did miss Kelly Garvey, but she's, that person is not present at this time, so we'll go to Tyrone.
My apologies. I thought that was Kelly we just spoke with. My apologies.
Tyrone, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make that, make your statements now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ms. Elizabeth, she wants to, to read the statement for me, but I managed to go to a friend's house that I can pick up sufficient Wi-Fi. It is a matter of life and that the pollution of wood pellet plants have not been proven to be effective in the United States. It should not be allowed that Robinson County become a testing ground for unpredictable technology. Emission levels are unknown, and long-term exposure to most of the pollution can increase respiratory problems. We are already accounting our property rates, and a lot of people with health issues that makes it viable for the COVID-19 virus and to admit with our air quality death sentence to an already poor and struggling county. Many are still trying to, from Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Florence. AERP vantage of the high property rate in Robinson County by. Yes, there is a need for jobs in this county, but not at the risk of people's health and even their lives. Where ten thousands of people in this county are already without quality healthcare. A high number of people in the community that this plant is located is minority and elderly people who, who if this hearing, if this board and if this, this, this meeting was delayed, I'm sure that they would have showed up in person. So I do agree that it should have been delayed to after the pandemic. We're very disappointed in that. They would have been a part of this meeting. We're asking this state organization, which is funded by the taxpayers, to do the right thing and protect the people of this county and deny this permit. To allow this permit will lead to disasters and add more burdens than a blessing to the people. The people this county has, it has been taken and has been taken advantage of. We asking you to please to deny this permit to the most vulnerable people in the state and the most vulnerable people in this country who have already suffered years of racial injustice and racial inequality.
I'm, I'm sorry, but your time has expired. If you could finish up in the next few seconds, please.
I'm just asking y'all to thank the people in this county. We were taken advantage of by the promising of jobs because of the low property rate. I have been taken advantage of. We want you to protect the most vulnerable people in this county, and that is the minority Native Americans and African-Americans who were.
Okay, thanks. Thank, sorry, but thank you for your comments. Your time has expired. Again, please, if you have additional comments, you're certainly welcome to send those to our office. But in the interest of giving everyone opportunity to speak, we need to move on to the next speaker. And I apologize. I think Rahat mentioned that I skipped over Kelly Garvey. Rahat, can we go back to Kelly?
She, she's not present, so.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Rachel Velez, followed by Shalonda Regan.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Rachel Velez, and I'm speaking on behalf of Clean Water for North Carolina. Ron Gaskins, who spoke a few minutes ago, stated that the comments being made this evening are personal opinions. This is absolutely false. So here are some more facts for Ron Gaskins and Active Energy. Communities in Robinson County are already overburdened by gas pipelines and polluting industries. And this site in particular is situated near two coal ash sites, an unlined landfill, Town of Lumberton Solid Waste Landfill, three above-ground storage tank incidents, two inactive hazardous waste sites, and other toxic facilities, all according to DEQ's community mapping tool. Approximately seventeen hundred people live inside the census tracts of the proposed site, mostly low-income and indigenous Lumbee and African-American populations. And this area is noted for having higher-than-average rates of heart disease, stroke, hospitalization, and asthma compared to the state average. DAQ must consider the aggregate impacts the company's coal-switched technology and surrounding facilities would have on the surrounding communities and public health. DAQ estimates the proposed site would pump five thousand pounds of hazardous air pollutants each year, including carcinogenic particulate matter, benzene, and formaldehyde, but lax emission controls could allow the company to increase production and vent even more carcinogenic pollutants into the atmosphere. However, because Active Energy's plant, plant would be the first in the world to produce black wood pellets, no modeling or comparative data even exists to accurately estimate total air emissions. Reliance on models from the Sampson and Ahoski and Viva traditional blonde wood pellet plants is not sufficient to protect communities from unknown amounts of particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, volatile organic compounds, and nitrogen oxides expected from the operations. Active Energy initially claimed the plant would produce forty thousand tons per year of black wood pellets, but their website boasts that they intend to boost production up to four hundred tons annually by 2021. Instead of rescheduling the March sixteenth public meeting following the COVID crisis, DAQ has uploaded a very technical, number-heavy PowerPoint presentation and video on its website. This attempt to provide information to the community on the proposed site in lieu of an in-person hearing falls short. As many households in the impacted area lack internet service. And I'm out of time, so I will submit the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shalonda Regan, followed by Marcus Sanders.
Both Shalonda and Marcus are not present at this time, so the next person would be Belinda.
Belinda Joyner, followed by Stephen Norris.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm Belinda Joyner, a citizen of Northampton County, home to Enviva, one of the Enviva wood pellet plants. First of all, let me say that I feel that this is a great injustice this afternoon to be having this hearing with the pandemic that's going on and the people that's going to be affected by not being able to participate. Enviva is a wood pellet plant, and basically it has made people prisoners in their own home from the polluters and the particulars that come from it. People are not able to come out in their yards and work in their gardens for their nose running, can't have cookouts for the particulars in the dust that's coming from Enviva. We are Black community. And it's sad, DEQ and DAQ, that, you know, our taxpayer dollars pay you all to bring stuff into our community to kill us. But this is what's going on. And, you know, we have these public hearings and you act like you're listening. But then when the rubber meets the road, you know, where we permitted this because they were in compliance with what the states say that they should be. But these people that are doing this don't live here. And as far as Mr. Gaston, ask him how close is he going to be living to a wood pellet plant down in Lumberton, that he wants to be there. I'm sure that he wouldn't want it within a hundred miles of where he live. And I'm sure that he does not live in Lumberton where they're suffering from floods and all the other things that's been thrown in our communities. So I say to DEQ and DAQ, yes, I am totally against it because I'm living in a community where we have a wood pellet plant. And I'm seeing what it's doing to people having to wash their cars every three days, power washing their homes at their cost. And people are profiting and we are suffering. So it's time for you all to do what you need to do and stop allowing us to be a dumping ground. We pay tax dollars. We are citizens. We are human. And we would like to live in our homes as humans because we don't have that opportunity when you all allow some to be thrown in our community to get up and move. And you live nowhere near the communities that you are giving these permits for. So again, I say to Mr. Gaskins, tell him to take it somewhere else. Put it in his backyard and see how he like. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Stephen Norris, followed by David Lowry.
I don't, I don't see Stephen Norris's full name, so I'm going to assume this is him. It just goes by Steve, so I'm just going to see if I unmute this person. That is Stephen Norris.
It's Stephen Norris with the APPPL representing. Steve, I believe your microphone has been unmuted. If you are the one that's representing the APPPL. Not hearing any comments. We may need to come back to that. Next, we have David Lowry.
David, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is David Shane Lowry, Associate Professor of Anthropology. I'm a member of the Lumbee Indian Tribe, and my research in Robinson County over the last decade has been sponsored by the National Science Foundation. I'm also on the Board of Directors of Winnia River Alliance. Alamas Road, where the plant is expected to be placed, has been a region within Robinson County where Robinson County residents have suffered from extreme poverty and chronic flooding. A historically important Lumbee church, Hesford Church of God, had to move from the area around Alamas Road because of severe and chronic flooding. This history shows Alamas Road is not only a site of chronic human disenfranchisement based on race, but also a site within which industries like this wood pellet plant are allowed to subvert calls for environmental quality based on a deep history of North Carolina's youth projects against American Indians. On the state level, we must consider what it means that the wood pellet plant is not going through Tobacco Road, which is Chapel Hill and Durham. Why is it that NCDQ continues to let dirty industry target Robinson County and not the more esteemed, more white sections of the state of North Carolina? I am opposed to this plant on Alamas Road, but I'm willing to reconsider if you would first put a similar plant behind the campus of USC Chapel Hill. On the national level, consider the fact that Robinson County is home of the largest American Indian community east of the Mississippi River. The odds NCDQ incorporation is a fun wood pellet production. Would randomly place this facility in the Lumbee community is slim unless, as I predict, environmental agencies at federal and state levels are purposely placing these types of industry in the Lumbee community. Following this publicly, public, following the public scholarship of Ryan Emanuel, Dr. Ryan Emanuel at NC State, and other community advocates such as Donald Chavis and Matt Ledgerton, it's time to stop what seems to be a purposeful assassination of American Indian health in eastern North Carolina and across the United States. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kathy Buckley, followed by Emily Zuccino.
Kathy, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Thank you. This is Kathy Buckley. I am speaking for myself, but I'm affiliated with many groups, including Apple and Climate Reality. And thank you for this opportunity. You know, we have a problem when this company includes in its name the word renewable. You never hear company names like Tangle's Renewable Solar or North Carolina Renewable Wind because they are renewable. And this company is not doing something that is renewable. Now, COVID-19 and Black Lives Matter are reminding us, highlighting for us that we really are all in this together. The makeup of the people of Robinson County has been pointed out already by previous speakers. And those of you who are deciding on this permit need to ask yourselves, would you support this facility being built in your neighborhood? Would you want your children to grow up within view of this proposed plant? If the answer is no, then you are legally and morally required to say no to this facility. Now, on the global warming front, we cannot afford to go in the wrong direction, to be cutting down trees, mature trees, and to be burning them up. Mindsight is 2020. We must have foresight in 2020. Please make a decision that will allow you to look your children in the eye in ten years and say, yes, I was all in for your future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Emily Zaccino, followed by Patrick Anderson.
Hi, my name is Emily Zaccino, and I'm the Director of Community Engagement for Dogwood Alliance. I'm here tonight to position to this facility, and I ask you to deny this air quality permit. I urge you to consider the impacts this facility will have on North Carolina's forests, on our commitment to reduce carbon emissions, and on the health and wellness of local communities. We have to look beyond the prospect of a few short-term jobs to consider the full and long-term impacts of this industry. Both Governor Cooper and this DQ have openly expressed concern about the wood pellet industry and the North Carolina Clean Energy Plan. The plan states that this industry has no place in North Carolina's clean energy future, yet North Carolina exports more wood pellets than any other state in the U.S., sacrificing our forests to be burned for electricity in foreign countries. This global demand for wood pellets is devastating forest ecosystems in the southern U.S. While representatives of the wood pellet industry claim that they are growing forests, the truth is that they are replacing our natural forests with monocrop pine plantations, which don't have nearly the same biodiversity, carbon storage, or flood protection as natural forests. Contrary to what the gentleman said earlier, our forests are not crops. Robinson County is one of the most frequently flooded counties in the state and is still recovering from past hurricanes. As we prepare for more frequent and more intense hurricanes, we must invest in nature to protect us from the damage caused by these storms. Natural forests and wetlands absorb floodwaters and slow them down, buffering us from flooding and reducing costly property damage. This is the type of investment that we need in Robinson County. The wood pellet industry is not the answer to rural poverty. If it were, these rural communities would be some of the richest in the country, but on the contrary, poverty rates in many areas where the wood pellet industry has facilities have been stagnant or have even increased. Research shows that there are far more jobs in the restoration economy or in truly clean energy like solar. The fifty jobs that AERP would provide at this plant come with the price tag of increased pollution, illness, and a degraded landscape. I ask you again to deny this permit, and I urge you to do a full environmental justice impact study. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Patrick Anderson, followed by Dedan Wakari.
Patrick, you can go ahead and make your statements now.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Anderson. I'm an attorney with the Environmental Integrity Project. I'm speaking tonight and also submitting written comments prepared jointly with the Southern Environmental Law Center on behalf of numerous local and state groups. I have been working on air quality issues in the wood pellet industry for more than three years, and I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on their behalf in opposition of this permit as currently proposed. This facility is indeed a new type of pellet process, and Active Energy itself admits it lacks the data to properly estimate emissions because this is a novel technology. While this is a new type of facility, the wood pellet industry is not new, and as DAQ is aware, underestimating emissions in the permitting process for wood pellet plants has been a consistent and troubling issue for years. Unfortunately, Active Energy has likewise underestimated and omitted several key pollutants. First, the company neglected to include acroian emissions from most of its manufacturing process. Acroian is a particularly acute, air-toxic, that is harmful even in low quantities. We know, however, from other testing at other pellet plants, that all stages of manufacturing wood pellets emit acroian at significant rates, and we do not believe that Active Energy's process is any different. As detailed in our written comments, based on those test, acroian emissions at the facility may be more than twenty times higher than the threshold that should require modeling to quantify health impacts and protect the public. Second, there are significant issues in how the company quantified formaldehyde emissions, another toxic air pollutant. When these errors are corrected for, formaldehyde emissions are more than twice the level requiring air toxics impact modeling, again, to protect the public health. These are important steps that shall not be circumvented. DAQ must require Active Energy to properly quantify these emissions and conduct the relevant air dispersion modeling necessary to protect the community. Otherwise, this permit cannot be issued. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Dedan Wakari, followed by Sean Schwartz.
Hey, Joe, I believe Dedan is not available on the list at this time.
Okay, we'll come back. Then we have Sean Schwartz, followed by Erica Barnhill.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead and make your comments.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Sean Schwartz, and I am a resident of North Carolina, Buncombe County. I am also a registered forester in the state of North Carolina and a certified forester and arborist. I have degrees in forest management and natural resources management. Informed by that, I have several concerns about the permit requested by Active Energy Renewable Power. First and foremost, concerns I have about the air emissions. The coal-switch process this facility will be using is untested. There is a lack of adequate data about what the emissions will actually be due to the unproven coal-switch process. There are known toxins that will be created throughout this process and possibly many more revealed by this method. Second are my environmental justice concerns. As previously stated, the citizens of Robinson County will be participants in an experimental process. While it is obvious that a plant of this nature will need to be near to the coast if it is to deliver its product overseas, locating this plant in an area that is known to be composed primarily of economically disadvantaged non-whites, there are environmental justice issues to consider here, and therefore, this permit should be denied as is. This is especially true during a time of COVID-19, when people in this region are already especially vulnerable to respiratory concerns. Lastly are my concerns about the application of biofuels for alternative energy at the scale in which this plant intends to operate. While I believe as a forester that biofuels do have a positive place within a portfolio of alternative energy and good, sound, sustainable forestry practices, biofuels should only be generated as a byproduct of sustainable silviculture practices that protect and restore the health of our southern bottomland forests. These forests should be managed in a manner that meets a variety of objectives, including forest health, flood control, wildlife habitat, carbon sequestration, and healthy human communities. An industry operating at this scale could drive forest management rather than good forestry driving the utilization of products such as biofuels. Biofuels need to be a small-scale part of a portfolio of renewable energy practices that benefit the communities in which the material is sourced from. Large-scale industrial forestry generating a product shipped overseas is not how biofuels should be utilized. As previously stated, our forests are not crops. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Barnhill, followed by Sally McLean.
I believe Erica is not available. We will move on to Sally.
Next, we have Sally McLean, followed by John Sprill.
Sally, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Sally, I think you have been unmuted. Can go ahead and make your comments. We cannot hear you right now. Can you check to see if you've been unmuted on your side of WebEx? Okay, Sally, we still cannot hear you. So we'll come back to you at the end of this. And we will move on to John Sprill, and that will be followed by W. Marvin Winstead. Do we have Mr. Sprill?
Yes, yes.
Okay, please go ahead and make your comments.
Yes, I'm John Sprill, joining you from Hampstead in Pender County. I lived and worked in Lumberton nineteen eighty-nine through ninety-three, and I own hardwood forests of the type that are being clear cut by the other four wood pellet plants in North Carolina. First, I want to make two comments about the process that's being followed here. In spite of your best efforts, this virtual hearing clearly has major flaws. I am joining you from a high-speed cable internet connection, but I've lost connection with you five times in the course of this hearing. This is not a proper substitute for allowing the good people of the Lumberton area to participate in person when it's safe to do so. Second, DEQ should follow the cumulative impact analysis and assessment processes of the National Environmental Policy Act and the North Carolina State Environmental Policy Act. This is a much deeper matter than just air quality. Layered on top of these U.S. and North Carolina environmental standards are the very pressing environmental justice aspects of this matter. You will receive very detailed comment letters addressing the major public health issues about this matter. Layered on top of these public health issues are the reality that the applicant nor its parent company has never operated commercially this type of plant anywhere. Its parent company tried to set up a factory to do this in Canada, but was not able to do so. This process is described as very high manufacturing risk, yet the parent company, which releases public information in the U.K., has never made a profit by any reasonable standards. It has very thin capital base. So if this project goes bad, what are the people going to fall back on? You won't be able to get blood out of this turnip. DAQ, DEQ should deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have W. Marvin Winstead, followed by Fatih Brown.
Hey, Joe, we're not able to identify Marvin Winstead at this time. We'll have to move on.
Okay. Then next, we have Fatih Brown.
Mr. Brown, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statement.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Can you double-check the mic on your end, please, sir? Oh. Sorry. Hello? Do we have Fatih with us? Sorry, I'm not getting any response. Okay. With that, Rahat, that's all the speakers I have on the list. Can we attempt to go back and check some of the individuals that we're not able to talk to initially?
Sure. Should I just start at the top of the list and just work its way down?
Sure. I had Stuart Hanford. Do we have Stuart Hanford to provide comments?
And let me turn off the, Joe, if I may, if I, I'm going to unshare my screen real quick to turn on the raise hand function, so you may repeat the star three direction for callers who've called in by the phone.
Okay.
Just give me a second.
Sure.
Hello, this is Michael Pajetra, Deputy Director with the Division of Air Quality. So right now Rahat's turning on a feature that we are going to use where, as Rahat calls out a speaker's name who is joined by phone, if that speaker then dials star three on their phone, Rahat will be able to identify the speaker and then unmute that speaker so that they can provide comments. So when Rahat comes back, you'll be able to go through the list, and we'll be able to connect with additional speakers. Thank you.
Okay. So Stuart Hanford, if you would press star three, then you would then raise your hand and so I can go ahead and unmute you.
So Mr. Hanford, if you would, press the star three. That way Rahat can identify you and unmute you.
Sorry, AJ.
Oh, hello?
Thank you. All right, you inspired me. Now I'm going to go run. I'm going to have, is it? I'm glad I-
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out who's unmuted. Just give me a second.
Sure.
So I believe I have everybody unmuted at this time. Okay. Sorry about that, Joe. I'm not able to see the raised, ah, there we go. Okay. Stuart, I believe that's you, so you've been unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your statement.
Mr. Hanford, go right ahead and make your statement, please. Can you hear us all right?
Yes, this is Kyle Cox. Can you hear me?
Oh, okay. Hang on one second. We have Kyle Cox. Okay, Mr. Cox, go ahead and make your statement.
Yes, I'm Kyle Cox with Hur Environmental. I just want to tell you, we support them for getting their permit. I know these people. They do a good job. I'm just in favor for them to get it. I think it'd be a good thing for the community, for jobs. I just think it'll be a real good plus for the community. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Apologize for getting names mixed up here. We'll try to go back to, who should we go to now, Rahat? Should we go back to see if Stuart Hanford, or shall we go to Kay Raybold?
Yeah.
What do we have now?
Kay, go ahead and, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statement.
Okay, you can hear me okay?
Yes, Kay, go right ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe DAQ should reject the Active Energy Group's proposal to build a wood pellet plant in Lumberton. Three thousand people live within a two-mile radius of the proposed wood pellet facility. Two-thirds of the population is non-white, and nearly a third live below the federal poverty line. Every step of the wood pellet production has serious environmental and climate consequences. Enviva, another wood pellet company, is already operating four facilities in North Carolina, all of them in or near communities of color or neighborhoods. Residents of Robinson County are already suffering from air pollution. Emissions levels are unknown. Most of these pollutants can increase respiratory problems. The proposed wood pellet facility would be yet another pollution source that causes poor air quality, along with a compressor station, coal ash dumps, and a poultry litter plant. Pollution from wood pellets are more harmful to the environment than coal. Burning pellets made with trees from healthy forests produces more carbon than burning coal and is bad for the environment and climate and contributes to more extreme weather. DAQ should require the company to do comprehensive testing about emissions. North Carolina Department of Air Quality is basing AERP emissions on a different pellet plant with a different process because this is a new experimental method. Another issue is that- Another issue is that the company does not have a water discharge permit from state regulators. The proposed Active Energy Group's wood pellet plant in Lumberton should be denied. It represents an enormous health risk to the community. The community of Lumberton and outlying areas should not be a dumping ground for dirty industry. DEQ has a responsibility to protect the marginalized, low-income people of color and indigenous people in Lumberton from the health hazards this wood pellet plant would cause. I'm asking you that you deny the permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person I have that we were not able to get to initially was Rachel Radveney. Or is there another name that you had, Rahat?
Yeah, I believe she elected not to speak.
Gotcha. Okay.
I believe Nikki Jones.
Nikki Jones, okay.
So, I'm going to look for a star three raise of hand to call on a person.
Ms. Jones, if you would hit star three on your phone, we can try and identify you and give you an opportunity to speak.
I do see a raise of hand, so I'm hoping this is Nikki Jones. I'm going to unmute this person. You've been unmuted, so you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, this isn't Nikki Jones. This is Erica Barnhill.
Okay, Erica. Yes, please go right ahead and provide your comments if you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much. I am a former resident of Lumberton, North Carolina, and I still have property in Lumberton, North Carolina. I grew up in Robinson County, so I'm very familiar with... I'm right around the corner from Alamack Road and Pope Crossing and Lovett Road, and I do not agree with this company coming in with this plant, so I do hope that the request is denied. You have a lot of elderly people in this community and in these areas that have been in these homes for a very long time. And just as other people have said, this community has suffered so much and they haven't even recovered from the hurricane flooding and storms and different things that have come through. And this is all that they have. And so, at this point, to add something else to the devastation from the flooding, now the coronavirus and this pandemic, you know, just to add something else that they have to worry about, that's not fair to the senior citizens in this community who very much make up the majority of the population from Alamack Road, Pope Crossing, Lovett Road, and this area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Barnhill.
Okay.
Do you want to try to go to Dorian Wainwright?
I do have a couple of raised hands, so I'm going to unmute this person. Go ahead and make your oral statements now.
Hello, do we have someone on the line?
Yes, this is Mark Cox with Hur. I'm in support of those guys having the permit. I think it'll be a good thing economically and supply jobs, which is what Robinson County needs the most. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That was Mark Cox, I believe?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, the next person would be... Florian?
Yes, Dorian Wainwright, possible? If you could hit star three on your phone, we will attempt to connect you.
I have not been able to identify
Okay.
any raised hands.
How about Grant Mercer? Still available to hit star three on your phone? Or Carol Richardson? Hit star three on your phone to provide comments.
Carol, you've been unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your statements now.
I've already made my statement. Do you need me to do it again?
No, ma'am, if we have gotten your comments, I think we are good.
Okay.
Thank you. Then we have...
I believe Keely Wood.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Keely Wood?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Hi, I do not live in Robinson County, but I live in North Carolina, in Lee County, and Robinson is very well-known for the coal ash sites, the poultry facilities, and what they went through with the flooding. I would like to ask DEQ and DAQ to do your due diligence and please deny this permit for various reasons. For first, this was not a public meeting, obviously, by all the people that weren't even able to connect this evening or that might not have Wi-Fi. This is not the way that you do a public meeting, so it should be replanned for a future date. The second reason that there hasn't been a health report done, this county will be affected by the toxins and the pollutants that will be emitted. The third reason why, it's an environmental injustice. This is a poor rural community, and they don't need another dirty industry. And it's very well-known that this county is suffering. So, I'm asking to please deny this permit. And I'm kind of insulted by Ron Gaskin's comments that these aren't all residents. No, I'm not a resident of Robinson County, but I am a resident of our state. And we should not be putting dirty industry into these communities like this that are already suffering. So, shame on you.
Okay, thank you. The next name I have that we were not able to get to initially is Megan Richardson. If you're able to hit star three on your phone.
Okay, I believe this could be Megan. I'm going to go ahead and unmute this person.
Do we have Megan on? Megan, can you hear us? Yes, go ahead. Who is this?
This is Steve Norris. I was passed over before.
Okay, Mr. Norris. If you can, go right ahead and make your comments.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Stephen Norris. I am the Vice President of the Alliance to Protect the People and the Places We Live, which is very active in eastern North Carolina, trying to prevent some of the exact same things that this facility will create in eastern North Carolina. I am appalled, actually, that DEQ, DAQ would even consider granting a permit to this facility. Given the crises, the multiple crises that our country is facing right now, that the whole world is facing, it seems unconscionable and actually pretty stupid to be entertaining a permit application from these people, especially under these conditions where we do not have an in-person hearing. We all know that COVID-19 is wreaking havoc on people and economies and the environment around the world. It is huge. What some people don't realize is that COVID is interrelated fundamentally with toxic air pollution. Multiple studies have proved in China and all over the world that toxic air pollution contributes to the susceptibility to COVID-19. We also know that COVID-19 and toxic pollution are related to race and environmental justice and that thirty percent of deaths from COVID-19 in this country are of African-Americans. How can we, in any good conscience, in a community which is thirty, thirty-five percent in this county, that's thirty-five percent African-American, how can we, in good conscience, put another facility that will add to the toxic air pollution and the poor health that that county often suffers because of economic deprivation and so on? Finally, I want to... All of us know about climate change. COVID-19 is a small example of what climate change, if we let it go forward with facilities like this, will produce. And we all know what Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Florence did to Robinson County. We will see that on a much larger scale if facilities like this are built. So, I beg you, I demand...
Mr. Norris, I'm sorry, Dr. Norris, your time has expired. If you can finish up in the next few seconds, please?
Yes, I demand that DEQ, DAQ reject this permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Joe, the next person I have is Charles Graham.
Okay, Mr. Graham, if you would, hit star three on your phone and we'll try to unmute your speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name.
Yes, this is State Representative Charles Graham. Good evening. I've been listening to the comments from the community and several comments from individuals who are from all over North Carolina, and I appreciate their concerns and really appreciate them being a part of this discussion. My concern is, I have several, but I will be very brief. At this point, I can't support this industry coming into our county. We have many community citizens have spoken out opposing the permitting. And I agree with them, but this time it's just not a good time to be having virtual meetings, especially in Robinson County, when our broadband capacity here in this county is very poor. In addition, we're fighting this COVID. We have many citizens who would like to participate and due to their circumstances are unable to participate. And I would ask DEQ to let's slow down. Let's give our community a chance to understand what's going on here in this process. I will also address a letter in writing to the department expressing my concerns, and I certainly hope that we can have better community and citizens input. And I understand the situation we're in with the COVID. I just don't think, at this point, it's possible to even do that. But I do would like to have our citizens to have a greater opportunity to enter. I agree with many things that's been said. We do need jobs in Robinson County. This is certainly an opportunity to bring jobs in the county, but I think our citizens are leery of this type production, and I certainly hear their voice and I support their voices. And I will not be a community resident and a citizen who would get behind this at this time. And I certainly hope DEQ understands that we need more information, and I certainly support that for our citizens. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity, and I will be in touch with the agency and I will share further concerns. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Rahat, do we have another name we can go to?
Not at this time, so I think we should just go down the list.
Okay.
See if people...
Sure. I have Darlene Richardson. Darlene Richardson, if you could, hit star three on your phone. And if not, then how about Matt Rice? Matt, if you could, hit star three on your phone. Or Yolanda Williams? If you could, hit star three on your phone. Erica Price? If you would, hit star three on your phone, any of those people I just called. DeMarco Williams? Hit star three on your phone. Heather Vaccara? Or Carlotta, excuse me, Coretta Alford? Jennifer Richardson? Tamiko Murphy? Hit star three on your phone again, as I call your name. Tajana Murphy? Michael Love? Hitting star three on your phone. Brenda Love? Stacy Roberts? And let's see, Nancy Buckingham? Or Thomas Rowe? Hit star three on your phone. Kelly Garvey? Star three on your phone. Shalonda Regan? Marcus Sanders? Dan McCary? Sally McLean? And then Marvin Winstead? Hitting star three on your phone. And then Fatih Brown? Hitting star three on your phone. Well, I think I have gone back to all the names that we were not able to get to first time around or the second time around here. So, with that...
Joe, I believe our director will like... So, I believe there's a couple others who are trying to make a comment. And then after that, our director would like to open up the lines. I'll let Mike Pajetra step in.
Absolutely.
Sure, thank you, Rahat. Thank you, Joe. Thank you for doing such a great job on this public hearing. Thank you for everybody that's in the audience and that is participating in this public hearing. At this time, what we'd like to do is for anybody that is logged in, if you want to press star three, if you're connected by a phone, you want to press star three, we will allow you to make a comment at this time. Once we're done with those commenters, we're going to open up all the mics. Now, I ask you all to try to remain in a quiet place in your home or office because once we open up all the mics, everybody will be able to hear everything, and it just becomes difficult. So, first, if you would like to make a comment, press star three. Rahat will recognize you.
Okay. I believe Fatih Brown, you've been unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your statements.
Yes. Hi, the reason I'm speaking today, I'm speaking as a resident of Richmond County, where we already have a wood pellet plant, but I'm a native of Scotland County, which is the neighboring county to Robinson County. And I'm just speaking on an environmental standpoint about the pollution that is going to be caused by another wood pellet plant in the area. In this part of North Carolina, we're already having difficulties with environmental pollutants. And as reported in the Robert Wood Johnson report in 2017, a person in Robinson County has a life expectancy of seventy-three years, while in Wake County, which is a hundred miles away, they have a life expectancy of eighty-one. And I just wanted to know why, if we, with this process is experimental, why are the residents of Lumberton and Robinson County being allowed to be used as guinea pigs? If this is an experiment and... If this is an experiment and this is an experimental process, why, why did they pick this place to do this experiment at? Why this, uh, community's residents, um, not being treated as they should be? This production of this torfied wood pellets has not been proven to be effective anywhere in the U.S. The DAQ is basing these emissions on a different pellet plant that uses a different process. And they have already admitted from their own notes that the emission factors to calculate the air emissions from the proposed sources, not only they're just unknown. Nobody knows what's gonna, knows what's gonna happen from long-term exposure to most of these pollutants. But we do know that they will increase respiratory problems, uh, ammonia, benzene, formaldehyde. That's not nothing that we should be putting into, into our air when we have our, not only the elderly, but children.
Miss, Mr. Brown, I, I think your time has expired. If you can finish up in the next few seconds, please.
Yes. That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to, the, the DEQ to at least consider, uh, waiting until there can be a real public hearing so that they can actually see and talk to the citizens of, of Robinson County face to face, so they can voice their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, I believe the next person is, um, give me a moment. Uh, Sally McLean? Um, I have, um, I'm trying to unmute you. For some reason you are not the, the, not responsive, okay. Okay, uh, at this time, I guess I will, uh, Joe, would you like me to go ahead and, uh, unmute all the callers?
Sure, let's try that again.
Oh, I do see, uh, raised hand by a couple of folks.
Okay.
Um, I can address those.
Okay, let's do that.
Uh, B Taylor, you've been unmuted.
Um, can you hear me all right, first of all?
Yes, if you can, if you would, state your name, please.
Yeah, my name's B Taylor. I live in York, which in the UK, fairly near to Drax Power Station. And I just wanted to like, add a couple of things, what people were saying, which is that, first of all, when you're considering the air pollution from, um, wood pellet mills, you shouldn't just consider the air pollution where the mill is itself, also where it's being sold to. When these wood pellets are burned, they produce huge amounts of carbon monoxide and other toxic gases that are like affecting us on a daily basis. And second thing I wanted to add was the, um, when you're considering the, um, pollutants that, the air pollutants that are coming out of this facility, you need to also think about the fact that the trees that are being cut down are also like, supposed to be absorbing like pollutants and saving people. So you shouldn't just consider the fact that these pollutants, the pollutants that are coming directly from there, but the pollutants that are not being absorbed in the rest of the environment at the same time. It's like, there are lots of issues here that like all connect together. And I feel like it's a far more complicated discussion than just what's coming out of this one factory, if that makes- So yeah, I'm opposed to, uh, the building of this new facility.
Okay. Okay, thank you for your comments. And Rahad, I think you said you had another hand that was raised?
Yeah, I have a couple of hands that come up so far, so Bonnie Montel?
Hello, yes, thank you. Um, I'm Bonnie Montel, I'm the founder of Plastic Ocean Project. I work in many different counties here in North Carolina, uh, picking up trash as well as doing research with students from various universities. And it wasn't until Hurricane Florence that I recognized that we are losing our trees due to nature itself. And in fact, we started a campaign Trees for Trash, planting trees to replace the garbage that we're collecting. And so the whole idea of us cutting down trees for a market when we have a huge problem with ever increasing hurricanes and storms that are taking out our trees. The trees that protect us not only from the hurricanes, but also provide oxygen as well as reduce CO2 emissions as well as the chemicals that are in the air. Another comment I would like to make is the fact that this is a social justice issue. We know that our air is compromised because of a serious virus. So why would we complicate that by giving a permit to this company that we know that there are going to be negative impacts from the emissions from this company? Whether, how, the, the extent of the toxins, we don't know, but we know that there will be some. There is no question about it. So I encourage you to say no to giving access to this permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, unmute, uh, several, uh, several hands once, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, so if you raised your hand, go ahead and speak.
This is Marvin Winstead, can you hear me?
Yes, um, Mr. Winstead, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I live in Nash County, North Carolina. True, I don't live in Robinson County, I'm about a hundred miles north of Robinson County. Uh, but if, uh, this plant is constructed and you start consuming the forest down there, eventually I will, my hair up here will be impacted by six thousand acres of forest land that will be consumed each year by that plant and, and other plants of its nature. Uh, I am a, um, and I also like to say that I'm a member of, um, Public Environmental Defense League. Our executive director, Lou Zeller, just sent a letter to Governor Cooper, reminding him that in North Carolina, only about, uh, about twenty-five percent of our population does not have access to Wi-Fi or the internet. And that, uh, these types of forms, I'm glad you're making an effort. It should not be the ultimate solution to having a public hearing, uh, a virtual public hearing. And you're in a county where I think the figure is forty-nine percent of the population does not have access to the internet. So I would encourage you, as all people said earlier tonight, to please, uh, do not make any decisions until a proper in-person, uh, meeting can, can take place in the future. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, if you've raised your hand, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you several at a time, so I know, uh, who's speaking. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Ms. Redine Cotton.
I'm sorry, can you state your name? Can you state your name just one more time, please?
Redine Cotton.
Okay, thank you very much, please go ahead with your comments.
And I am a resident of this community that will be greatly impacted because we, I live maybe a mile away from the plant that you're talking about. And I am opposed, and I would also, like others, have commented that you would wait for, uh, more public hearings. But even if you don't wait, to vote no for the permit for this company.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
All right, um, unmuted, uh, the other raised hands, uh, go ahead and make your comment.
Yes, my name is Adrian Kennedy and I am a fourth generation resident of South Lumberton. Um, just a few years ago, we were before the DEQ, DEQ fighting about, um, rejecting the pipeline. And here we are again, um, discussing something that is going to risk the residents of Robinson County. Um, I am not for the plant and I feel as if the DEQ should definitely take a stand and not approve, um, anything that is going to take more harm and more effect to the people. There's someone that is on the call, Shalonda Regan, she has chronic asthma. And for years, from Matthew to Florence to COVID, we walk our neighborhoods and check on residents that don't have phones, that don't have computer and internet access, that need resources, that can't be on this call today. They're elderly people that cannot be on this call today. So to the person that said, you know, that we might not be from here or we're, we're not making a, a, a comment, um, from the community, I'm speaking for South Lumberton. And I'm saying that we don't need the plant. We don't need a wood pellet, we don't need the job, okay? We, we need better, if, if you, the calculations can come back that it's renewable, we know scientifically that it's not. And that it's gonna hurt us and not help us. We are tired of being the dumping in the sacrifice zone for a company or an industry that wants to see if something works. And then we have to be the ones to figure out and manage the lives and the health and the economics and the development and the redevelopment of a community. We don't, we don't need the plant there. We don't want it there. Reconsider it, take it over there to North Lumberton. There's plenty of trees over there, there's plenty of land over there, they're tearing down trees to make nice parks. Put the plant over there in North Lumberton. Make the example, the protocol, the prototype, put it over there in North Lumberton. No, we, I'm speaking for, for South Lumberton, for all the generations, for the elderly, the disabled, those that, that are, don't have the necessities and the affordability to get on this call, I'm speaking for, for them. But Matt Leggerton is on the call and Matt, we need to get together and, and figure out because, so, this cannot, this cannot go on. It cannot continue on that we are the sacrifice zone because we're black and brown, because we're economically disabled. This is a common sense matter. Air is invisible, but it is necessary.
Your, your time has expired, can you finish up in the next few seconds, please?
That's my calling, I would yield my time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, let me see. Okay, you've been, uh, unmuted, uh, so, uh, go ahead and make your statements now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your name?
Yes, my name is Chelsea Easter, I work for South Wings in Buncombe County. And I'm here to stand with our partners opposing this facility, requesting a denial of the permit. Um, thank you for the opportunity to join this hearing. However, I echo the concerns raised by others that many members of the very community who will be most affected by this mill have limited or no internet access restricting their participation in this discussion. Please consider delaying your decision until an in-person public hearing can be safely held, so that everyone can make their voice heard. This pellet mill will have harmful irreversible effects on the health of the citizens of Lumberton. AARP has failed to provide any emissions data to prove that their operation will not cause negative impacts on air quality and subsequently, human health and safety. NCDAQ is currently basing emissions data on other mills using different methods than AARP. And thus it's irrelevant in evaluating emissions from AARP's operation. AARP is proposing to use a new experimental process, which in and of itself should be enough motivation to complete a full environmental justice report, as this method's impact on air quality has not yet been sufficiently studied. NCDAQ must comprehensively test this method for air pollutants, as we've already heard that the members of this low-income minority community are incredibly vulnerable to respiratory illnesses. We need to protect these communities and not put them directly in harm's way. The forests and communities of the southeast have suffered enough due to the biomass industry's destructive practices and allowing another mill to operate would be a terrible, terrible mistake. This industry is not a green, clean option for alternative energy and it's extremely misleading to label it as such, given its negative impacts. Our forests are being destroyed at an alarming rate and the argument that these trees are being planted to replace them is extremely out of touch, considering how quickly a forest can be felled versus the slow rate of new growth. Clear-cutting forests removes vital protection from hurricanes and flooding in this proposed mill directly in a major flood plain. When, not if, another flood happens, this mill is bound to cause significant water pollution as well as other significant damage. I urge the NCDAQ to place human life and health high above any other considerations. And please deny AARP an air permit or at least require an environmental justice report. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Um, I do have one more, Joe Irving, you've been unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name again and then make your comments?
Joe Irving, I'm calling from England as well, and I also live in York. I just want to say about the effects that these wood pellets are having when they're burned in the UK. And they're burned in a powered plant called Drax that looms over a village of Drax with, I think, six huge cooling towers pummeling out smoke that's affecting the air pollution in the area that is harming the communities there. And that the, and with the air pollution shown to be, in fact, that, and harming communities and increasing the chances of diseases, lung diseases, heart diseases, cancer. And on top of this, in twenty twenty-seven, the subsidies that allow this to survive are going to run out. This is not an industry that is secure, it's not gonna last a long time and it's not gonna have a demand that will provide secure jobs in the UK or in the US that supplies it. And on top of that, the, the pellets that get shipped across from the US clog up the ports, have noisy huge trains that go past more communities in North of England. Um, and yeah, the, the pollution is awful, um, and it will continue to be awful across the globe. The effects of trees cutting down, we can't afford it, we simply can't afford it. And I'm speaking as a nineteen-year-old who is scared for their future as well, looking at all the things that happen with the climate. This is ridiculous, this is injustice. Um, and in my comment, I'm opposed to this, severely opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Um, I do have, uh, Stuart Phelps?
Good evening or good morning, I'm calling from Brussels, UK. So I'm not going to attempt to tell you how you should deal with your own circumstances, but I have another three points-
Mr. Phelps, you're, you're difficult to hear.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better, can you state your name again, please?
Yes, my name is Stuart Phelps, I'm calling you from Brussels, UK. And there are three points that I think you need to take account of, if you're not on the last speaker. There are more changes going on in the UK at the moment, we are entering into a major recession, which means that electricity demand is changing dramatically. Just gone through a period of two months. Our electricity requirement is not above the burning of coal. So we're probably not going to legalize it for sure. Secondly, the environmental impact in the UK means that there is a growing campaign against the use of wood pellets and against the Drax power station. Heard that from the two other UK speakers. The last point I would make is to bring together the statements of other experts on the effect of EM two point five, um, precursor to COVID-19 deaths. Now, the UK is ahead of the US in COVID-19 deaths, we've had forty-three thousand six hundred and forty-seven to date. What we do know is that it has a very dramatic disproportionate impact on what we call black minority populations. A black male is four times more likely to die from COVID than a white male. An Asian male, three times more likely, black women, three times more likely. That's based on the data that we've got from the UK and across Europe. The impact therefore of what you're proposing to have in that year in the population, which is very, it's, it's quite serious. I speak as somebody who lives in the UK, ten percent of most of the population in the UK. We've been monitoring the movement of the earth for years, to acknowledge what's-
I'm, I'm sorry, but you're getting a little more difficult to hear.
I'll finish anyway.
Okay, thank you, and I'd encourage you to, to submit those comments, you faded in and out, uh, a few times there, so thank you for your comments.
Okay. Um,
Yes, this is Representative Charles Graham again, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Graham, Representative Graham, go right ahead.
Again, I just want to reemphasize, uh, you know, the area we're, we're talking about here tonight is, is a part of my legislative district. I know that community very well, Alamack Road, Pope's Crossing. Um, I understand the concerns that our citizens has- Alimack Road, Pope's Crossing. I understand the concerns that our citizens has as relates to this economic endeavor. And, you know, we all are in agreement with one thing. We need jobs in Robinson County. This particular project, from what I'm hearing from all over this state, and more specifically here in Robinson County, it's not wanted, it's not appreciated by the citizens. And I would suggest and say to the department, let's do nothing until we've had a chance to allow the citizens of those communities to have an in-person hearing, an in-person public comment session. I understand, you know, it may not be, this is a time that we can do that, but I would encourage the department to put off any decisions as far as any permitting until the public can fully understand what's getting ready to happen to them and have input. I just want to reemphasize that again. Jobs is important, but our health is more important. And, and I'm certainly going to support the community and their desires in this endeavor. So if the department can hear the voices that I've heard tonight, I think you will do the right thing and hold off on any permitting until we can have further meetings and discussions on this issue. And I certainly appreciate what the department's doing. Thank you for having this meeting tonight, but it's not enough. We need to do more. And I certainly hope that you will hear the voices and hear the concerns of the community, especially here in Robinson County. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I believe, well, I have one more, one second.
Okay.
Nima, you've been unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your statement.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. My name is Naema Mohammed, and I'm with the North Carolina Environmental Justice Network. And I'm here to stand with the community, NCJN, staying with the community in their desire to have safe jobs, safe, safe jobs to save lives. And I would like, NCJN would like to go on record as stating that, given, under the Title VI Act of 1964 and, and in line with the Environmental Executive Order 12898 by President Clinton, that anytime you're in a country where you have predominantly low-income or people of color, that environmental justice has to be a consideration for citing this industry. And I live in eastern North Carolina, I'm in Edgerton County, and I work all around the state, and in particular, all over eastern North Carolina. And the shame of this is that every community that's being cited with dirty industries look the same. And so thus we call it environmental racism. We don't think it's a mistake. We think it's because these communities are perceived to have the least amount of political clout and economic clout to fight off these dirty industries. And DEQ was developing a Title VI too. And the two, you know, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around why you have a Title VI too, if it's not gonna play a role in your decision-making. If you can look on that map like we can look at it, and you can see that when you get ready to cite something, that there's already five or six other things already there that's destroying people's lives. Why in the world would you decide to let something else be there? I think that this permit ought not even be being considered, given the conditions that exist in Robinson County. And the fact that that is a major flooding area, you're gonna be cutting down trees, which is gonna cause more flooding to take place, and people are still trying to recover from Matthew, from Michael, and from Florence. And so I just think this is an injustice that's too, too huge to wrap your mind around, that this would even be considered for that area, given that they faced over the last three hurricanes in that area and the amount of flood, and the fact that we got coal ash, Gen X, industrial agriculture, you know, all in the area that we, we, we can have on people's lives. So I think that this is not being considered.
Your, your, your time has expired. If you can finish up your comments here with a few seconds.
Okay, thank you for giving me the space to speak.
All right, thank you.
Joe, at this time, I think I've covered, I've gotten everybody. So at this time, with the direction, I'm, Director, Deputy Director Pajetra, I can unmute everyone at this time. If you do not wish to speak, you can go ahead and just quickly hit mute on your side, but if you do wish to speak, you can make your comments at that time. So, so I'm gonna go ahead and unmute everyone at this time.
Do we have anyone that wishes to make comments?
Let's see the full list.
Do we have someone?
I've seen Matt, Mike Rowland, we're scared of AEG.
Do we have anyone that would like to make a comment? Could?
I'd like to make a comment. This is Dr. Norris. I should think DAQ would, before any permit is considered, do some estimates of the number of deaths and the types of sickness and amounts of sickness that would result from these toxins.
For your comments, we, we, let's give a chance for some, some others to, this evening, if they wish to. Have anyone else that would like to make some comments, please?
I'm sorry, I had to kind of mute.
Getting too much in the background.
Yeah, I, I'm unable to identify speakers and.
Okay, all right.
Unable to process audio.
Right. Well, with that, I think we were able to get to those that pre-registered, some of those that pre-registered, and the hand raised, and a few more. So with that, I'll just note that, appreciate your patience on the public hearing this evening, and if you're not able to speak this evening and still want to provide comments on issuance of the air permit to active energy renewable power, please remember there are several ways that you can provide comments until the end of the comment period. And the end of the comment period is June 26, 2020. You can call 919-707-8714 and leave a voicemail message with your first and last name, whom you're representing, and your comments on the proposed permit. That number again, if you want to call and leave a voicemail, is 919-707-8714. You can provide written comments until the comment period ends, again, on June 26, 2020. To provide written comments, please email them to daq公共 comments@ncdnr.gov. And I'll spell that out. That's D-A-Q dot P-U-B-L-I-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S at n-c-d-e-n-r dot G-O-V. And you have the subject line of Active Energy Renewable Power. And you can also mail comments to the address listed in the public notice, or you can fax written comments to 919-715-0717, and please address that to Mr. Gregory Reeves. That number again, if you want to fax comments, is 919-715-0717. I'd like to thank everyone in attendance this evening and your interest in the public hearing process. Thank you for your patience. Based on information received tonight's virtual public hearing and comments received throughout the comment period, I will make a recommendation to the Director of Division of Air Quality for his consideration in making a final decision on whether to issue the air permit to active energy renewable power. Again, thank you for your cooperation, attendance in this virtual public hearing, and interest in the permit process. The public hearing is now considered adjourned.